Good morning. It's Tuesday, October 18th, 9:30 a.m. If you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to start with a prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
And we've got minutes of October 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Now, open up for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Anyone here? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. County Engineers Office, Dan Becker. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning, Dan.
I'm not used to "sir," but thank you.
Okay.
All right, that's it. I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first is approving consulting servicing contract with Refraction Research, Inc. And the second resolution is entering into an agreement with the townships and villages in Medina County to sell materials pursuant to some authority under the Ohio Rice Code and the weekly permits.
We know what you mean.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Human Resources, Holly Muren. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have a new hire in transit, two title changes, and one leave of absence. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for the IT department.
Make motion to approve the two resolutions?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our Facilities Director, Steve Bastine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for your consideration. It's accepting the proposals and awarding contractor for move-related services for the Medina County Courthouse project. We'll be moving with cash movers at $81,388 to make that move.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
I do have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned this this morning. When will the move actually start transitioning?
We take C of O on the courthouse as of right now on December 5th. So, all of the inspections will happen on that date. And then, from there, on December 6th, we should start moving everybody over.
Okay.
So hopefully, December 5th evening, we'll start moving security equipment over, I'm hoping. And then, the sheriff will be in that building. And then, all operations will start moving.
But it'll be done in stages, right?
Stages. That is correct. It'll take us, I do believe, about a month to move everybody over.
It's just amazing when we walk through. It's like a beehive with all the activity going on.
There are a lot of things happening right now.
With all the trades in there.
Hundred, hundred and twenty workers at a time right now inside the building.
Wow. All right. Very good.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Amy?
Good morning. I have ten resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the 2022 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. Second is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Third is revenue adjustments for various funds. Fourth is cash transfers for various funds. The fifth is authorizing the cash transfer for the County Home Levy Fund. The sixth is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Print Shop Revenue Line item. The seventh is authorizing the purchase of 7,200 gallons of regular unleaded gas for the Engineering Center. This went to Port's Petroleum at the price of $2.665 per gallon for regular unleaded. The eighth is amending the purchase of service agreement between the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging and the Medina County Board of Commissioners for the Office for Older Adults for fiscal year '22. The ninth is allowing expenses of county officials. And the tenth is approving claims for the week in the amount of $4,35,315.54.
I'll make motion to approve the ten resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Interesting to see on our gas resolution that the number of bids is going down.
Two.
Yes. And again, the gas volatility.
Ah, yes.
To see at the pump is probably a reason for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we tend to do a little nail-biting every time we're trying to solicit quotes to see if we can get quotes and meet the delivery requirements.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Our Planning Services Director, Denise Testa.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
I have one resolution for your consideration, authorizing the advertisement for bids for a CDBG-funded Village of Lodi Park improvements project. This is the fountain repair project, so part due.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Department Updates, Richard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Things continue amazingly. We're just, there's just so much going on. It's amazing. The overall value of construction, homes and commercials so far this year is 83% higher than this time last year. It's just amazing. New home values have gone up just a little bit now to about $390,000 average for the year. And the new home starts is at 332 so far this year. So it seems like we're gonna end up at about a three- or four-year high for new homes since there's three more months to go. On to page two. That's breakdowns. Breakdowns. Call the permits. Page three. Year-to-date receipts remain high and just keeps increasing every month. It seems like the percentage of increase just keeps climbing. It's quite amazing. Page four. Just quantities per township. Page five. Again, more breakdowns per township. Page six is interesting. Total number of commercial permits so far this year is 135. All of last year was 111. And of course, that's, a lot of that is due to all the redwood apartments that are getting built and the other projects around the county also, certainly. But it's still quite amazing. And then, that last page, I'm happy to say has been enlarged, so you can actually read it. My never-ending quest to have larger fonts that I can read. Yeah, you can actually read that now. And hopefully, Alicia will be able to do this here on out. She, it's not an easy thing for her to enlarge this, but it's worth it. But yeah, you can actually read it now. That's breakdowns for commercial projects.
So, Richard, there's a $14 million project down there in Sharon Township. Is that an office building of some sort?
14 mil, yeah, that, no, that's a big, that's the Celacor addition. They put a big warehouse production addition down there at Celacor in the, in the, the Commercial Business Park down there. North, north of, south of their square. So, yeah, we're, we're very busy. I had previously mentioned the Insurance Service Organization does a grading system of all building departments, I think throughout the country. And we, they do it on a five-year basis. And our time has come up again. So, on November 1st, they're gonna come visit us. We have our report as due. And it ends up being a very lengthy report. Ends up being a binder that's about two and a half inches thick. And it's, it largely contains a bunch of this information. They wanna know a lot. And of course, they do. They grade the building departments. And that somehow then is used to drive the cost of insurance for folks in any given area based on their, based on the grade of the building department. So, it's important. It's interesting. But it's a lot of, a lot of doing. They, it's amazing the things they ask for. The minutia that they ask for. But still. So that's, that's gonna happen on November 1st. Other things, we're hiring an intermittent inspector who is a dual-certified for building and electric, which we're very excited about because we, we need that help to keep up with all these projects. And so that's, that's a real good thing. And essentially, that's about all we got going.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Richard.
Very good.
Thank you.
Medina County Fiber Network, David Carrato.
Good morning, Dave. Good morning. So, the quick quarterly update from the enterprise portion of the network. We've added another carrier who is our partner that we are utilizing for residential. They now will be giving our community enterprise companies another choice, so that takes us up to 15 carriers that can be chosen from, from the type of internet or voice services. So they'll be helping us on that side, too. We have two ARPA projects. One of them is for the construction in Alomari and Guilford Township. The first disbursement has come in. All the materials have already been ordered. The design documents are just about wrapping up. But considering that, I saw snow on my deck in Westlake this morning. I don't know how the build schedule will fare through the winter, but we will, we'll watch that. Of course, we are aerial through Alomari, so our guys can work in the cold as long as they're not boring underground. The second ARPA project, which is, is our Dial, our digital inclusion and literacy. Our base project plan is just about completed. We've lined up the resources. It looks like we'll be in the January, February timeframe for having all the videos done. We have decided that the Dial will have two facets to it. One will be in-class teaching to assist individuals with digital literacy. The other will be an online course. So we're working through the logistics of that at this time. And we actually had to peel back a little bit of the construction, or pull back, I mean. We had 20 crews doing underground, and the utilities were having a bit of a challenge keeping up with us for marking their assets when we were coming through. So through the oops process, we are reassigning some of the workers to other areas to take the high concentrations out of some cities and moving them elsewhere through the county. And not from a direct revenue perspective, but the Medina model, as we call it, that our partner sells across the country, has signed up another 65,000 homes in Texas and 10,000 homes in Pennsylvania. And we're working with some of the Eastside suburbs, Hunting Valley, Gates Mills, City of Avon on the west for duplicating what we're doing here, which I'll be speaking about tomorrow down in Columbus at the Broadband Access Ohio Meeting. So, very busy.
Any projection on when you're done with the county as far as we're going?
For residential build-out, we're still about 36 to 48 months out. You know, we added, we started at 50,000 homes. We're up to 60,000 homes. So we added another 10,000. So we, it was a, it was a three-to-five-year project. I'd say we probably added 12 to 18 months. If we can get the utility owners to keep up with all the crews we have, we could keep that at the 36 to 48 months. But it's quite possible it could go, you know, another 12 months over that. It will all depend on how quickly we can move through.
But the Alomari portion is still January of 2024, correct?
That is correct. We are still on schedule.
Because that's above ground, but obviously, they are the utility.
Yes.
Working with them.
Yes. Wait, 24th in the year.
Yeah, yeah, 2024.
Yes, the end of '24, not January.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Yes, the end of '24. Yeah. Took 12 months away from me there.
Just pushing to get it in. We know that they want it sooner, so almost had them this quick.
So, Dave, you mentioned that there is another service provider for the residential side.
No, for the commercial side. For enterprise. Yes. So Lit Communities, our residential partner, is also going to add cross-connects into the enterprise side because they are a CLEC, just like our other carriers. And they meet the requirements for diversity and, you know, everything else that we look for in a carrier. So it adds another choice for people. Or for enterprises, I should say. Don't confuse it. Yeah.
Super. All right. Any other questions?
Thank, thank you so much. Thanks.
Okay. We do have our Health Department Director here with us today. Krista, you wanna come forward?
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm always happy to hear about Medina Fiber. You know, we hooked up the Health Department to Medina Fiber.
Thank you.
We're very pleased, very pleased to see that expanding in the county. It's important. Wanted to stop in this morning. I wanted to speak a little bit about boosters with you. The new boosters are available. We've been administering those at the Health Department for several weeks. Our pharmacy partners also have them. I think there's a lot of discussion right now because it happens to coincide its flu shot season, and it's also the new boosters available. I think people are trying to decide, what do I, do I get them both at the same time? Is one more important than the other? And I just wanted to take the opportunity to say, they're both important. They're both very important. The, the new boosters are designed to give a wider protection against COVID-19 and a stronger protection specifically against Omicron. And I know what we're seeing in other parts of the world are, is not the BA4 and 5, but it's a variant of Omicron. So it is still very important. We're giving, we have clinics at the Health Department today from 10:00 to 6:30. Next Tuesday, from 10:00 to 6:30. And we'll be down at Suprema Senior Center October 28th from 10:00 to 1. And we are still not charging any administrative fee for those. We wanna make it really simple for people. You can make an appointment, or you can walk in. So, so I wanted to just kinda give you a little brief on that. And then, the Health Department does have our levy renewal on the ballot. Wow. I, I don't know that I have seen so much interest in elections and so much early voting and absentee ballot requests. We've had over 18,000 people request absentee ballots already. And they're sending them in. We see, we're seeing a lot of traffic going down Jefferson, going over to the Board of Elections to do, to do the early voting, which is very, which is very exciting. It's nice to see such involvement from all of our citizens. The Health Department, as you know, has a renewal. It's renewal-only. There was, the auditors on their homepage of their website just put up a, a little summary of the tax issues on the ballot. And folks can find it there. And we're right at the top. It shows everybody we're $9.42 per $100,000. And it'll be $9.42 per $100,000 with a renewal. So fixed cost levy, there's no change. We're asking for that to be renewed. We've been your Health Department for over 100 years. We're proud to serve the community. And not only just being a safety net, but there are so many programs that we offer to every single person living in our county, working in our county, or visiting our county to maintain their health, to keep Medina County healthy. So just wanted to remind everybody about that and, and to give you a little bit of update about what's happening with the agency, so.
Regarding the COVID booster versus the flu shot, I imagine you're recommending that any individual that, ought to talk to their, their provider to make that determination, whether they ought to get them, how far they ought to space them, those kind of things.
Yeah. So they've been, they've been approved, and you can get them the same day.
Right.
Some people may have different considerations. And so the message that I've been giving is, get them together, space them apart, whatever's the right thing for you, just get them. Particularly if you're over the age of 50.
Very good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's see. We do have a resolution regarding supporting the West Creek Conservancy's Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program application for the Champion Creek Connector Project. There is, I think October 28th is the due date. I know that we're, our office now is administering those applications, but this is one that in support of funding for that project.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. All right. Now, open up to public comment. Anyone here? Stan, do you have anything? You want to add? Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody? All right. Enter into a discussion session. Laura, I know you've got something for us. Yeah, sure. You're on my list first, so. And you gave us all these nice colorful slides.
I know. Right? Okay. So I have a slide, a presentation that hopefully, we're gonna get going here. This is a new format to me. If everybody, once we get the slides up on the monitor, if you, you kind of have to turn around and see, but the Commissioners won't. So we'll go, so since the levy passage and with COVID, we were able to get a lot of capital improvements done in our agency. We've done the walls. We've done the floors. We've redone offices. We took out glass block. We've done quite a few things. But like so many people, we save, with their homes, we save the kitchen the last. You save the most expensive, I guess, for last. Our kitchen is 40 years old. Our building was built in 1982. And we are seeking to redo it, get it updated. So if you could go to, oop, we missed a slide. Can we go to slide two? Oh, okay. If we could go, the drawings and proposal have been submitted to us by Jessica Powell and Envelope Consulting. And James Duber is here today from that firm if there's any questions. And then, next slide. We had a walkthrough with Commissioner Hambley, who's the liaison to Office for Older Adults. That was on September 28th. Next slide. And then, we, I've continuously worked with Amy Lyon Galvin, Stephen as the Facilities Director, and then Jessica Curtis, who is our kitchen supervisor because she knows how things flow and what she needs to make an optimal kitchen. So this is the current layout of the kitchen. And I've highlighted different areas that we are looking for renovation. I had Jessica break it down into, into different areas. Some of them work together. Like you can't do one part without the other part. But I'm gonna present the whole thing because we really would like the whole thing done. So if you see on the next slide, we're gonna focus on the cafeteria line. You can go to slide seven. Oh, sorry, Stan. Slide seven. And that's the cafeteria line, how it currently looks. And those are roll-down shade, roll-down covers. And then, the next slide is when they're open. That's, that's what you see. That's the view of our kitchen. On the left is from the dining room looking into the kitchen. And then, the reverse is on the right from the kitchen looking out to the dining room. If you go to the next slide, the cabinetry, as you can see, is aged. Many cabinets don't close. Maintenance has given them tons of tender-loving care to keep them functional. Our steam table, which was in the first slide, it's at the end of its life. And then, our coffee station was at the end of the cafeteria line. And that's not really conducive to best practice. When you're serving lunch, we have people coming trying to get their beverages when people are flowing through the line. So we'd like to see a different flow in that area. So what we, what has been proposed is, the estimate includes 22 linear feet of cabinetry between the dining room and the kitchen, granite work on the surface and tray counter, and a new steam table. It also includes cabinetry in place of the current hand sink, which was over in a corner. And then granite counter work surface. So all the granite is up front and will be seen by consumers and will be functional for the cafeteria, or for the kitchen staff. We also will have cabinetry with full height upper cabinets for storage on the back wall, which are the brown cabinets that, that you saw. Also included in that is a new flooring at the service counter on the dining room side and refinishing of those shutters. The estimated cost of, for that area of the project is on the next slide. Oop, I forgot the pendant lights and the reconfiguration of lighting. Okay. If you could go to slide 19. The estimated cost of that work is between $90,000 and $100,000 for that area of the cafeteria line and cabinetry. So the next area is where the dishwasher is. If you can go to the next slide, you can see pictures. This is our dish area. We have a nice Hobart dishwasher. We're not looking to replace that. It's in good shape. But it's very small. It's a very small area. If you go to 23. That's the outside. And we'd like to move the wall where, the wall with that door in it, we'd like to move it out, move it out to the end of that, what do you call that? Half-wall?
Window moly.
Sure. The wing wall. That's it. Thank you. I needed the technical language. Yeah. So it'll move out to the end of that wing wall. And then, we will have a coffage, coffee and beverage station. Will be out in the dining room right against those windows for people to serve themselves. We are looking at a coffee service that will be 24/7, ready to go. When people want coffee, they'll be able to, to get coffee. Right now, we are confined to, you know, we have very, very large pot of coffee. But when it's gone, it's gone. Or we have, it takes time to remake it, things of that nature. So we're looking at reconfiguring the stainless counters and the existing grinder, which is the garbage disposal, and a new three-compartments sink which is the garbage disposal, and a new three compartment sink that I think will fit in the corner. Isn't that what they were talking about, Stephen?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And then 21 linear feet of knee wall at the exterior wall. Maintenance electrical plumbing connections for the beverage bar. I had to look that up, so I'm really proud that I knew what that is. And demo of that existing wall between the dishwasher and the dining room and a new partition, so it's gonna enlarge the area. A new rolling shutter to match the other rolling shutters that are gonna get redone. So they'll all look, they will all match. And then we will have new lighting in the dishwasher area. And if they need to trench for the beverage bar, they will. But I'm thinking that hopefully that can go along the back wall. They won't need to trench for that.
Don't say those things out loud.
Okay. All right, anyways, trenching for the beverage. So there'll be some new flooring where, you know, they have moved the wall and everything. And then new ceiling as well, where the wall's been moved. And then cabinetry at the, at the beverage bar. I'm on 31. Thank you. And a new coffee maker, but actually, we're looking to contract with, actually, we're looking at U.S. Foods right now to contract. They'll provide the coffee maker and if we purchased a coffee, to go in the coffee maker. So we're looking at things of that nature. So the estimated price of this part of the project is $75,000 to $85,000. That's on 32. And then we'll go to the next area is the cooking area and the back wall. So this is the back area of our kitchen. And actually, that shows the redesign of what we're trying to do. So you can see on the lower part of that picture, we wanna make a pass-through wall. So the meals and milk and things like that are loaded from the kitchen side. And then from the opposite side, the drivers will be loading their bags. So the drivers will no longer have to come in the kitchen to refill and load all their bags.
And distract the staff.
And distract. Thank you. And distract the staff. If you could go to, that's the current area. So that's the kitchen side of things. Currently, that's where our triple sink is. Health department and just in a commercial kitchen, you have to have a triple sink. You never know when the dishwasher might go down. And for sanitation purposes, there's a wash wrench sanitation sink, so it's a requirement. So we're just gonna move that up to the front part by the dishwasher, which really makes sense. So this kitchen has two grinders currently. One we never use. We don't, we only use the front garbage disposal. We're not, we're not sure. A lot of times, we're covering that with a large train, using it for a surface area to bag meals and things like that. It's not being used. And then when we have had to use a triple sink, it really moves our dish operation to the opposite side of the kitchen, which has been a bit difficult. To me, this is the most exciting part. But we're trying to accommodate serving seniors out of the front part of the kitchen while serving, it's serving drivers out of the back part. So it's just, it becomes really cramped in the mornings when we're trying to get that done. And we're trying to make things more functional. So if you could go to 38? We are looking to create a new opening in that wall, that back wall between the kitchen and the back hallway, including a lintel at the opening, which I don't know if they'll have to put in a, a beam. I don't know if they know that now or just, just a new.
Yes, she will.
Okay. Oh, Stephen said, oh, there's a little debate there, but. So we'll figure that out. But we were, we're looking at a new pass-through fridge and warming cabinet. And then a new rolling shutter. That can be closed and locked, but it can also open for communication between the kitchen staff and, and the drivers. If you could go to 42? We're having, there'll be new counters in the kitchen prep area. And 43, reconfiguration of the gas line. We wanna move the, the main gas stove top over underneath the exhaust hood. And also, we're gonna try and back up, if we can, the current ovens that are out a little bit. We're just gonna try and move it back. We're trying to expand the space that the, the kitchen people have. And then there'll be a new hand sink for the drivers. Drivers and the kitchen staff have to have ready access to washing their hands before they're handling food. We will reconfigure the lighting layout and, and the hallway. And then the estimated project cost for this is $160,000 to $175,000 for that area. The next area is the cooler and pantry, pantry wall. If you can go to the next slide, this is two views of it. So one with the pantry door open and one with it closed. So we want to back that up and basically shrink our, our pantry space in order to expand our cooking and prep space. If you could go to the next slide, it's very cramped. I tried to get a picture of it. This is a very cramped area. So you cannot fit a full tray into that oven without moving that table back. And even when you move the table back, you, you know, you kind of have to walk around the oven doors. And really, it's a, it's a burn hazard, I can tell you from personal experience, to reach over and try and put stuff in the oven. And about 20, 20 trays have gone into, you know, go into there when they're full of, of the meal. And even if all 20 trays, which isn't gonna be possible, can fit in that warming oven, that pass-through oven, we're still cooking there and putting things in and out of the oven on, on a regular basis. So we wanna try and make more room in that area. So on 52, that, that covers, we're gonna demo the wall between the kitchen and the pantry and create a new partition with electrical plumbing, whatever we need to get that wall built. And on 54, we'll be reconfiguring those ceiling. Of course, you're gonna move a wall, you're gonna have to redo the ceiling. 55, there'll be new shelving in the pantry to hopefully accommodate our needs as far as a pantry goes. But Jessica Curtis, our Kitchen Supervisor, was pretty confident that all the pantry needs would be able to fit in that smaller space. And the estimated cost of that is $45,000 to $60,000. Area five is our store room. And that's what it looks like. It looks like a store room. So on the left, you have our paper products. Our home-delivered meal trays are in those blue bags. And then the actual bags that the drivers deliver, the extra ones are, are the red bag and below. So they're shelving for that. And on the other side is the cleaning products, which are accessed not only by our crew, but also the Medina County Cleaning Crew for the building, their stuff is at. So we are sharing that space with cleaning supplies and all of our paper products. And we want to redesign that to have it function more appropriately. So the first thing we're gonna do is remove the garbage chute. There is an original, original to the building garbage chute. And we are trying to figure it out. I think it perplexes Stephen. He's like, why would anybody want all the garbage to come down to the basement, only to take it up a floor? This is, goes into the whole history of designing the building. But, which I won't go into, but there is a garbage chute there. So we'll take that out because it's not utilized. We wanna build a new partition separating the janitor's area from storage. And really, that should be done. You really shouldn't have your, now, they are physically separated, but there really should be a wall between your cleaning products and all of your stored paper products, just for safety and sanitation. Next slide, on 63, there'll be three to four new shelving units in the storage room. The assumption is that most of the shelving is, is to remain. And there's another back area off that storage room that they, is not gonna be touched. And that is, our building was originally designed to hold two elevators, but it only has one elevator. But that's the elevator chute that we have. It's a nice space, and we have it shelved out and, and filled with storage. But the cost of that, redoing that area is $25,000. Area six is the actual floor, all the flooring in the kitchen. We, they will have to temporarily remove the equipment to allow for prep and installation of the new flooring. And the assumption is that is one of the last things to be done. And cost for new flooring is $58,000 to $68,000. And then I have just pictures of our flooring. So slide 68 is the total cost and of the project, all added up. And I took everything at the highest end, in the hopes that it won't go to that total. But I think in costing it out, it was the, the better thing to do. So if everything was done that I discussed with the design CFP and contingency and overhead, which is a little less than they, they had put in the plan. But we have $615,000, $615,100. I'm requesting consideration of $200,000 in ARPA funding to complete this project. And the remainder of the cost can come out of the reserve of the Human Resources Levy funding that we have at the office, which is currently, at the end of 2022, it's estimated we'll have just a little over a million in our reserve funding. And I have been saving to do this project. Now, also out of that, I will be back in a couple of weeks with another project that I'm looking to do. But I wanted to get this before you to take a look. Jessica submitted these plans in September. And we just wanted to get it in front of you, because we'd like to get going on this project if we could.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add, James?
I do. I have to tell you, I've worked in a number of.
You, we need to come up over here.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. So that the viewers can hear you. Go ahead.
My name is James Duber. I'm from Envelope Consulting Services. And I've been working in the county through many of the buildings since 2009, '07. And this is one of those spaces that is truly trying to do 10 pounds of service in a five-pound kitchen. It's incredible, actually, all the things that actually do get produced on a day-to-day basis in there. And it is, it's 40 years old. It's just done. It's done everything it needs to do. The services that are being provided are, were not intended for that kind of design. And, you know, I think it's an extraordinary opportunity to get something to be functioning at a much higher rate and actually have just a wee bit of elbow room in that kitchen. It's, it is pretty incredible. It's a complicated project, because there's an awful lot of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing issues. We would like to get the building to be a little closer to complying with current building codes, too. All those things should, should happen, too. So, good project.
Jim, how confident are you that the materials to do this project are readily available?
I, I have, I'm confident that, I am confident that one of the products, and I just don't know which one, is not gonna be available.
Right. Maybe a computer switch or elevator controls or.
Yeah, something. And, and, but we've been dealing with it. And, and so you, you do the best you can. You have a lot of communication with all the suppliers and the engineers. And you just ask people, what, what's not available? About a year and a half ago, paint, you know, was, was an issue. You know, that's no longer the issue, and now electrical gear is something else. And so it's always changing, but we've always managed to kind of do this on the fly typically with our contractors. Once we get the project to the point where it's awarded, we do get a lot of input now from contractors and about what's going on. And we try to expand the list of acceptable manufacturers for every product during the bidding process. And believe it, we hear about it. You know, you're asking for a such-and-such, it's gonna be 10 months, you know, for something like that. Right now, we don't have any other roofing issues that are plaguing the industry for this project. So I don't know anything immediately that they say, you know, absolutely not for the next 12 months.
You gonna reuse most of the distribution panels that are there?
For here, yes, because everything is now more efficient. We're doing more LED lighting. I don't anticipate a need.
And greater loads, right?
Yeah, bigger loads. And in fact, we're actually using some for the pedestrian bridge project, too, because we're talking about adding a heating to that, too. And we still have adequate utilities for the building.
So the stainless steel counters will be basically reused, reconfigured, cut-in? Or are you going to be total replace?
All of those. I mean, and we're going to, I mean, so we are, we're going to have to modify some of them, which you can with stainless steel. And then some of them, you're just gonna have to buy new.
Got it, okay. All right, all right. And I, Laura, when we walked through with Amy and Stephen, I asked her the question you wanna, if we don't do this now, when's the next chance we'll have the, you think we'd be able to do it?
Well, I think it'll be piecemeal. If you don't do it now, then we'll be like, oh, we really need, we really want this part done. And I have, you know, $100,000 today, which is $200,000 tomorrow. And a million, you know, 10 years from now or whenever. So to do it, as has been explained to me, because I said the same thing, let's just do part. Well, I only want it, and then, you know, it's an ongoing forever project. I, I really think that, that this is the time. I mean, yeah, we do have right now some reserve funding. But as with reserve funding, it gets, it gets eaten up with different projects, with different projects or with service growth and things like that. So right now, to me, is a good time, and we want the kitchen to last another 40 years.
And right now, you're, you're operating beyond the original design capacity.
Oh, yeah.
And then I, that, that's, I guess, the important thing here, too. We need to, for the next, if you will, number of years, to have that capacity. Really, now's the opportunity. We had, do have, do have ARPA dollars that we can. There are, this is an eligible project for the use of those dollars.
Was this project submitted as part of the ARPA?
It was not.
It was not.
We're still working on it.
Well, yes, we were still working on it. And initially, I thought, you know, maybe we could swing it. But we really need the additional help of, of ARPA dollars to make this project complete, to get it done.
Now, as I understand, I share with them, as I understand the original story for the garbage chute going all the way, originally, that, that enterprise was supposed to be at ground level. They were supposed to be original at ground level. And because of discussions with the city of Medina regarding height for, for the trucks, for the fire protection, they literally had to sink it for that purpose, as I understood. There was, as I understood, also was one commissioner says, no, go ahead and build it and let the fire department buy a higher ladder. But I, it didn't work out that way. But as I understood, that, so they kept that design and just sunk it down. Originally, I think the basement was supposed to be storage.
Correct.
When, in the concept designs, but.
And there is a G for our floor in the elevator. I'm so happy that we're on the ground floor in, in the basement. I thought, we're ground floor, we're on the ground.
See, they didn't change any of the design, they just sunk it, so.
It's the garden level.
The garden, oh, I love that. That's good.
But as it is, explains why the garbage chute goes all the way down before you have to take it back up. They just.
For composting.
All right, I guess that, so for discussion, how do you wanna?
Steven, that you want to add?
How do you want to proceed with this? What are your thoughts?
I'm good. It's a beautiful project.
I, I think it's a great project. I would trust that you'll value engineer it and do what you need to do. And then in conjunction with this, we also have the, the bridge, right?
Correct.
Well, it's a separate, yeah.
We're gonna see that soon?
I think we have a pre-construction meeting this week, Thursday, Thursday.
That's not my party, but I really hope I'm invited.
Okay.
It affects you, so.
Yeah. Okay, and so at this point, we'll go, Amy, give a direction to go ahead and proceed. All right, support it for the ARPA.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. All right, go back into our regular discussion session. Jeremy?
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Few things I wanted to bring to discussion here. First, Veterans Breakfast. We do have a date of Thursday, November 10th at 8:00 a.m. at the Engineering Center. So we sent out notifications, but just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
So I'll be there.
Sounds good, we'll mark it down.
We have a data board meeting right after that, by the way.
Next thing I wanted to discuss, utility trucks. During my budget hearing last week, I had asked for a utility truck for the water department and a one for our line maintenance department. The ordering window for those is November 7th through November 10th. So we have three days to order for next year. So I was just wanting to see if I could get approval to move forward with being able to order those vehicles, if you didn't have any issues with that. And then the last item here, I wanted to discuss solid waste rate increases. I brought that up during the solid waste budget hearing last week. And, you know, with it being towards the middle to end of October here already, it's about a month-long process to get those rates adjusted. As you have to advertise, there has to be three hearings and all that. And wanted to know if I had your support to move forward with those proposed rate increases.
Yep, start the process.
Yep. Okay.
Part of the plan.
Okay, yep, so.
And that was discussed at the Policy Committee.
Correct, at the end, we had that in September.
Okay.
Yep, so, okay. I think that's all I had, so.
That's it, okay, great.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Amy? Anything for discussion?
I had a question for you. How are we doing on the OSU extension, ARPA? Have we heard anything?
You wanna, sorry.
No, actually, I have a number of things to follow up with Booker and Eckler on. Their timing has been a little bit different, based on the number of clients that they have that they're trying to support on these ARPA decisions. We talked about the project concept originally. If it doesn't fall, though, under the qualifying ARPA-funded projects, it's a, it's a clear government services offering that could fall under the revenue replacement, the $10 million that has been committed to. You've not yet allocated all the entire $10 million.
Yeah, I was just hoping to get a resolution next week, so Stephen could get moving with ordering.
I certainly can present the resolution using government service revenue replacement dollars. And if we get a different opinion back, we could shift the bucket.
You wanna go ahead and proceed then?
I think we should.
Okay, okay.
The materials ordered, there's.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. But the question, shouldn't we just take action on the revenue replacement piece? And take all of that $10 million and set it aside, so that we are released from the bounds of ARPA?
That would be fantastic from my perspective, only because we'll do that resolution once, demonstrating that revenue replacement piece.
And then we can make decisions on how to.
I'm fine with that.
We still have to, we still have to, obviously, still follow the federal procurement requirements.
Actually, you do not for that component of.
For that component, you do not?
Correct. So it greatly simplifies. In fact, like for the Dial project, when David was in here talking about that, some of that demonstration you'd need, you need to make in order to justify the qualification under the ARPA bucket. It's challenging. You have to identify the, the target population, that they were definitely impacted by the effects of COVID and so forth. But if that falls under the government services revenue replacement bucket, they won't have to go through that same procurement process, for example, for ordering their books.
At this point, you're proposing go ahead and transfer it to the revenue replacement portion?
Can we have that resolution for next week?
Okay.
Absolutely.
I would take everything that we can take out of the ARPA dollars, put it in the revenue replacement, so that frees it up.
For ordering purposes with WV Mason, then I would like that $170,000 for the OSU extension project. I, I mean, I'd really like to be able to list the professional building, you know, early in the year. And if Stephen could get ordering, it would be great. So we can do that for next Tuesday, too.
And what I'll do for you is update the spreadsheet that shows you the tally of monies committed so far out of the government services revenue replacement and eligible projects. So you see what your balance would be then, given that $10 million commitment.
We know that a number of counties have done exactly that.
They have.
Right, yeah. Okay.
And to that point, while I'm up here, I guess I will mention, too, our next report is due through the portal to the U.S. Treasury at the end of this month, and it's for activity through the end of September. So I'm working on that information this week. And my understanding is that Dennis D. Camillo is still doing that portal work outsourced.
Right.
But I've not yet heard back from him. So I did reach out to him yesterday, inquiring, you know, if we could connect by the end of the week to make sure he had everything. You know, for the timeliness of that reporting. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Holly, you have anything? Stephen, anything else for us? Yes, go ahead, Richard.
I have a correction on my report from Mr. Hud.
I have a correction on my report from, uh, Mr. Hudson's question about the fourteen million dollar project.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, off the cuff, I answered wrong. That's, that's a new facility for the Nelson Corporation. They make pumps, various pumps, water-type pumps. And I, I think they're currently located in Barbados, and they're relocating to a new facility up by the Medina Airport on Portside Drive.
Got it, hmm, okay.
Quite a large, quite a large facility.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in this report, I'm also quite certain that the spelling was, is wrong in that, that it's, their Nelson is S-E-N, mine's S-O-N, and I have no involvement in this.
Okay.
It's not a front company to funnel funds.
Okay. Nelson, got it. Thank you for that correction.
You're welcome.
All right, um.
Stan, you want this?
Did I catch everybody needed to? All right, Colleen, you have anything for discussion?
No, just the OSU, I'm all.
Okay, got it. Bill?
Uh, yes, data board. So the data board was created back in the nineteen seventies, uh, based on a nineteen sixty-seven statute that, um, allowed counties to have, uh, data processing equipment. And when's the last time you heard the term "data processing" being used? So it is, it is an antiquated, uh, statute. But nevertheless, um, back sometime in the seventies, like seventy-two, seventy-three, uh, around the commissioners passed the resolution creating a data board. And, and it, I'll skip over many years of history, but in, in the last six years that I've been, uh, participating in the data board, it has not functioned as a statutory data board. Um, it is a, uh, more of a coordinating, uh, group that coordinates IT functions across the county. And, uh, the, the current leader of the group, Lowell Philak, uh, is retiring. And so I, I challenged the group, uh, a few meetings ago to create a charter and to define its purpose and, and what it intends to affect and, and do in the county. And, um, they're, they're struggling a bit with it. Uh, but nevertheless, I, I do think that it is something that it, it's important that, uh, that they define what their mission is. As part of that conversation last week, uh, the representative from the auditor's office, uh, suggested that, uh, the auditor was okay with abolishing the statutory framework for the data board, which would require the commission, commissioners to simply pass a resolution abolishing it. Uh, if, if the commissioners were to do that, it wouldn't necessarily mean that this group would cease to exist. In fact, I think that they should continue to exist and continue to coordinate, uh, IT issues, uh, across the county. And the commissioners have embarked on creating an IT department that will serve the commissioners' offices. Statutorily, we cannot require other elected officials to, um, abide by what the commissioners are doing. But I would suggest to you, from my standpoint, there's an awful lot of money and resources that can be saved across the county if we have a more coordinated, um, IT, uh, function. So, um, I guess I'm just bringing this up to the commissioners, just to kind of inform you and make you aware, uh, of the issue. I would expect that over the next several months, there'll be more conversation and discussion. And, uh, eventually, the commissioners will have to make a decision as to whether to keep the data board and do nothing, or, um, abolish it and, um, create a different framework for, for this.
Um, why, given, I mean, this is, it, this is not the first time the thought has been to dissolve the, the data processing board. So my question is, is, um, do we really need to take that long painful process and keep going back to the same answer, that it's not functioning, uh, like it was original statutory purpose, because it is antiquated, uh, that would ought to be replaced with a, a coordinating function, IT coordinating function, that basically is an advisory to all the elected officials and the county under our system? So I'm, 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 I actually, I'm comfortable with starting to prepare a resolution to that effect, not only dissolving it, but also then, uh, creating that advisor group.
Okay. Um, I, I would, I do think we should have some further conversation with Mike Lyons.
Right.
Um, about the, the implications on doing this and, and what we could put into place to replace it.
Right.
Um, and so we have a good, um, framework to discuss further, so. That's, before we do anything in, in a resolution format, I, I would like to have some additional conversation.
Okay, all right. So you outlined with him is to actually what that replacement function would look like.
Right. And what authority the commissioners have.
In passing such a.
In that regard, right. Well, I know we can pass it, we can abolish the.
The dissolving, right, right.
The statutory data board. It, it's a matter of what authority do we have, um, in, in to replace it and to create a function to coordinate.
Well, they, do they actually have authority?
The data board?
Yes.
Uh, yes, they do, under the statute.
Yeah, they can approve NDAs and things like that.
Okay.
Oh, they, they can do far more than that. They can control purchases for, for most all of the county boards and, um, and subdivisions of the county. There is a, a, I'll call it a conflicting statute that suggests that the commissioners, even if you have a data board and a functioning data board, the commissioners can go around it and don't have to comply with it. So that's, seems to be a bidding congruous, but that's the way the legislature wrote the law.
So, at this, well, I didn't want to dis- disband the one without creating another way to, to do things, I guess. So I, I guess the question comes down to, so you'll have, so you'll have the prosecutor review, that is there an alternate that, that could be found to replace that and make sure that we're not leaving any gaps in terms of the authority of coordinating.
Right.
Those purchases. Okay, all right. So I'm, I, I guess, I've got my support to go ahead and, uh, to move forward, trying to develop the plan then.
Me, too.
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, all right. And I don't have anything, so, uh, we do have a request for exec- executive session?
I will make a motion to move into executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee and to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Swenick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, all right. And we'll be standing at ease and going to executive session, and Bill will be returning with no actions pending. Thank you. Most of the time?
Yeah.
All right. All right, 10:55, we're out of executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move second, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, everybody have a good day.
Okay.